Hello Anthony, hello Cynthia.
How are you?
I am good, how are you?
I gotta get my background on.
Okay. Don't use the one with the headstone.
Hey, how do I do the backdrop again?
You don't have your video on Anthony.
You're not showing me the screen, can I see the screen please?
Hi Tracy, hi Joe.
Hi Tracy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, you need to go like cover over the screen.
Chris, you're gonna put your background on?
I can't see.
Hi Nora, this is Tom Harmon. Thank you very much, thank you very much for bearing with me to.
I am not putting the, I am not putting the public on yet.
I appreciate it.
That's okay, it all works.
It all, at the end it always does, thank you.
Hello.
Hey guys.
Wow. Look at how you all can stand in the same spot at the same time without stepping on each other.
Amazing.
On a sunny day. Joe, what do you have going on there with your blurry background?
Yeah, that's the new thing.
I like that effect.
Things that phase in, I've been seeing that a lot lately.
It's, it's the interior of Al Kwadi's mind.
It's much muddier than that.
As, as, as they say in the old days, no comment.
Joe, Al just wants you to purchase a green screen like he did, so he's very excited about that.
No, but I like the blurry.
I'll, I'll, I'll put, I'll put that in the next, uh, requisition. So Chuck, look for that in the P O, okay?
Oh shoot, where do I, where do I change my thing?
Joe, choose. Right next to stop video, the arrow.
Sharing the screen, so one of you, we can do it one at a, one at a time.
Tanya, see where it says stop video, there's an arrow, click that.
No, I just, I just enabled it.
Choose virtual background. So we got it too?
Oh yeah, perfect, now it's good.
Let's go, but where it says stop video.
You see?
Okay, so Tracy's good, alright Tracy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come off, okay Mayor, try yours.
Well, I'll send you a picture of it so you can see it.
Great, okay. Alright Mayor, you're good, yeah, yours looks good. Okay, come, come out now.
Are, are you seeing the preview or no, just the main screen?
No, I'm seeing, I'm seeing the preview too.
The preview too.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you had it right for a second.
Better? Yeah.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
I like when you do a full tech review.
You have to come out Mayor, come out of it.
Uh, yeah, of course, move to this screen now. And stop sharing.
Anthony, just send it to you.
Tanya, okay, Tanya, we want, Tanya, what time is it?
She's on, she was just there, she's here.
Yeah, no, she, she came back in.
Does anybody have a flag? Now that we're sharing screens, does anybody have a good picture of a flag?
I do not have a flag.
I can have one up here.
I can get one pretty easily.
Yeah, I'll get one. At the school board meetings, somebody holds up a flag.
I just realized that the other one was from Web X.
Yeah, I found one upstairs, I was like, I knew there was one here. Come on, we are son of a veteran, there's a lot of flags in my house. All the time.
Chris, where do you go to get the background?
Okay, so you see where it says stop video? Did he add, did you add that already? You should have.
No, because remember, we were using Web X, so I just had it on it, so you have to have it like saved on your desktop.
Do you have the logo still on your computer from last time?
Where's Nicole?
You should have the logo, the one I sent to you that you saved for Web X, it was, um, this picture.
Tanya's got her background.
Yeah.
You know, I had it saved on my desktop, so it was easy for me to call.
I got it.
This is Scoba.
I wanna make sure I pronounce your son's name right.
Alright, now what I do is.
Savario.
Savario, I wanna make sure I get like the right.
Where it says choose virtual background? The option should be there, you just click the, the picture and it'll come up on your background.
Okay, is that up at the top Chris? Because I have the background in front of me, uh, where is that?
So you see where it says stop video, see where the stop video function is? On the bottom of his screen? Where it says mute, stop video, if you click the arrow on stop video, you'll see where it says choose virtual background.
Okay.
And then you should be good.
Hold on, hold on. Go again, because I have the town hall in the background, go ahead, what do I do?
Right, you see the stop video, uh, selection, right, the bottom of his screen, where it says mute to the left and then it says stop video?
Alright.
Click the link, click the arrow, because then it says choose virtual background. So click that and then you could add the logo.
Background, great.
Like yours more than mine?
I don't know, you can do it.
Got it?
It's like a nice waving flag.
Because then you just add the image. Looks nice.
Except just share the image, don't share your whole screen.
I thought that's what I did.
No, I can, I can click on AOL for you.
Anthony, say it.
I see that, well, what's happening is, is that the background is on my desktop, right?
Right.
Can't transfer it back on to, I can't transfer it on to, let's see, it says general.
So hit the, so next to where it says, where it says choose virtual background, to the right of that, there's a little plus sign.
Yeah.
Click the plus sign. And then.
Looks fine. It's good Al.
A virtual background.
Yep, that's it.
And then it says add image. Click on add image.
Okay, Al has to shop, stop sharing, otherwise you can't say it.
Alright.
Got it Ian?
I'm trying to do it, but.
Al, you got three minutes to get in the car to drive down the street.
Oh wait, did you go to add image and it pulls up your settings and everything? Do you see that? So that it's, if it's on your desktop, you should scroll down, you should be able to see it, what's it called?
Should pop up.
See in the top, little box in the middle, does it say desktop?
My image was called Web X.
Yes.
Yeah, what'd you save it as?
Get the image dragged into the, um.
No, you need it saved on your.
Yeah, you gotta have it on the desktop. Al, you got two minutes, go.
I could get there in two minutes probably. He's only really got it.
Oh Chuck, Christine's waiting to get in.
Yeah, I'm looking for her name to let her in, but where, where, which one is she?
Hopefully it says Christine Hablitz, huh?
It does, it does not, is she on the phone?
I know, because I know from library board, I forget.
Oh, you know what, let me see, maybe it's her phone number?
I bet it just says iPhone.
iPhone.
Yeah. Is that, is iPhone just Christine? Might be.
Oh boy, you could ta, you can, you can chat with her.
Let's see. That's Christine, okay.
Yeah, Christine, you gotta change the description where it says iPhone, you gotta put your name on it, that's why Chuck didn't know who you were.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm gonna do it right now.
Okay, how do I get our screen, I hit more, right? Chris?
Yeah.
And then?
You just missed the Scoba tutorial.
You wouldn't want my tutorial.
You have to get it on the recording.
So you gotta where stop video to choose a virtual background? So where the.
You got there, the, the thing is, it's not how long it takes to get there.
The arrow, right next to stop the video.
Okay.
See that? Click that and then says choose virtual background and you're good.
Yeah, but Christine's on her phone.
Hit stop video or hit?
No, no, hit the arrow, hit the arrow next to it.
That says share content?
Al, you still with us?
No, you shouldn't, are you on your phone or your iPad?
She's on her phone, it's different on the phone.
Go to gallery view Anthony. Upper right corner, view.
Anthony, Anthony's good, his background is fine.
No, I know, but he can't see everybody.
I got it.
Anthony, you got his gallery?
Yeah, I got it. What are you drinking Seaver?
A tall glass of water.
She's still celebrating Amy's birthday.
Amy's was two weeks ago, Emma's was yesterday.
Oh hilarious.
It's just, it's a month of birthdays.
Yeah, it's seven o'clock, Christine, do you see it on your phone?
You good?
Are we good?
Where's Cynthia?
Cynthia's here.
Yeah, Cindy is right there.
Sorry, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, I'm gonna let everybody in then.
Yeah, go ahead Chuck.
Okay.
There you go.
Oh.
There you go.
Mr. Kucha, you ready?
I am.
Cynthia, Mrs. Kraus, you ready?
Yep, I'm ready.
Yeah, thank you. We should probably ask everybody to mute themselves. Yeah, I will, I will. Uh, for those participating in our meeting, can you please mute, we have background noise, thank you.
I am, uh, I'm, I'm just putting the, uh, the council on at this point and, uh, the participants.
We're having a lot of.
My picture's not.
Let me, I'll, I'll get it back on Christine.
Thank you.
Okay, we have quite a number, so this has taken me a minute or two. But, uh, we can certainly start.
Thank you. This meeting is now called, called to order Monday, February twenty second, twenty twenty one. Councilmember Kwadi, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
No need it.
Who was this?
Councilman Van Cherry, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement of public notice.
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash eight and NJSA ten colon four dash ten as follows. Notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at two twenty five Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on February seventeenth, twenty twenty one. A copy of the notice is mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date, additionally, a copy of the notice is filed in the office of the township clerk on said date. This meeting is being conducted under the circumstances surrounding the COVID nineteen health situation, no public will be allowed to attend the meeting in person, a link and a telephone number to join the meeting can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Kraus, at this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hablitz?
Present.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Present.
Councilmember Seaver?
Present.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Present.
Council President Scoba?
Present. We're gonna take the minute, the minutes of both meetings, have a motion to approve the minutes for January twenty fifth and February eighth. Moved by Councilmember Hablitz, second by Councilmember Kwadi. Are there any questions or comments concerning those minutes on January twenty fifth and, and February eighth?
Council President, Council President?
Yes.
If you could ask, there's two numbers on the screen that don't have their phones on mute and we're getting a lot of feedback, so there's a five, six, three number and a nine, nine, seven, if they can mute, please?
And those two individuals, please mute, mute your phones, we are getting feedback, it's kind of challenging to run.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so let's continue, are there any questions or comments regarding the January twenty fifth or the February eighth minutes? Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hablitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Van Cherry?
Yes.
Council President Scoba?
Yes, um, I want to thank all the, uh, individuals that are participating in this meeting, uh, we have two very important, uh, presentations tonight. One by, uh, Superintendent Marinelli laying out the vision of, of our grammar schools for the future, which is very highly important for the academic value that she brings along with the board, uh, to this community. And the second, uh, the most important and highly important budget that the mayor is gonna be going over, uh, spent countless hours, uh, working with staff, uh, and the council and making sure that the budget is as fair as could be, uh, and he'll lay out his vision this evening. So at this time, uh, Superintendent Marinelli, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, uh, thank you for having me here tonight and I see, uh, quite a few members of my administrative team and the, the board here as well and what you're about to see is definitely a, a team effort, not only by the internal stakeholders, but the external stakeholders as well. Okay, I just want a thumbs up if everyone could see my screen. Okay, thank you so much, so, uh, today we're going to talk about, um, as President Scoba stated, the, the vision for the future of our K to H school district, uh, which we would like to present tonight as a referendum for the fall of twenty twenty one. So what we want to highlight first is how, um, fiscally responsible the district has been with creating a five-year long-range facility plan project, um, outline and committing to those projects utilizing the two percent cap uh, that we are bound by as well as our capital reserve. So to date, the projects that we've been able to complete or that are currently underway are a district-wide needlepoint bipolar ionization program that is very, um, important to air purificate, purification. At school number one, interior door replacements and five bathroom renovations. At school two, interior door replacement and bathroom renovations. And at school three, roof replacement, exterior upgrades, interior door replacements, toilet room renovations and other interior renovations. Now, these are a lot of upgrades that in other, uh, districts may have needed to go out to, um, for a referendum or an extended, uh, percentage of tax increase. But you'll see that, um, that we were able to take the budget that we have and work these projects into that plan. Some other projects that, um, we have on our list that we are looking to complete again within our own funds is interior finishes and upgrades to school number one, some window replacements, filling in missing grout at window sills, replacing the asphalt paving, refinishing the basketball courts and replacing of the hoops and repointing the brick. At school number two, interior finishes, um, and when I say interior finishes, we're talking about, um, new, new painting, hallway painting, uh, classroom painting, some floor finishes, some ceiling fixtures and finishes. Filling in missing grout at the window sills, power washing the cast stone, replacing ceiling at the windows, repointing the brick, window replacement and pipe insulation. And at school number three, uh, interior finish upgrades, asphalt paving, perimeter fence foundation, restriping of the parking lot and refinishing of the basketball court and replacement hoops. And as we replace fences, we're no longer going to replace them with those silver chain link fences, we'll be utilizing the same black style fence that's around the new parking lot, uh, that we're able to put in again within our own funds at school number two. So what I'm going to present to you today is, um, a result of a lot of collaboration and the product of the goal set forward by the Little Falls Looking Forward Strategic Plan that encompassed input from all of the community back in two thousand and nineteen. And those goals, as a reminder to everyone here tonight, is to increase student access to a progressive learning environment, encourage student and teacher voice, provide exemplary instructional experiences and to develop and maintain positive collaborative relationships with all stakeholders to strengthen support for the Little Falls School District. From those goals, we have selected five specific areas of need. Preschool classrooms, media center and cafeteria, performing arts and athletics, improved HVAC systems and ongoing maintenance of aging infrastructure. All encompassed in the referendum would be district-wide HVAC upgrades, central air conditioning and control, so a lot, a lot of talk has happened surrounding HVAC systems, especially since, uh, the beginning of the pandemic. And, um, this new HVAC system, in addition to the needlepoint ionization that we've been able to complete, would give us a, a top quality air circulation system for our students and faculty. This will help, um, of course in the pandemic, but also beyond with the common cold and flu, it would be a doctor's office, um, type of, of, uh, air filtration system. Flooring replacement for the entire district. At school number one, an auditorium addition, a gymnasium refurbishment, a cafeteria build out, other interior renovations that you'll be able to see in this presentation and some site work with a turf field. At school number two, preschool classroom addition, a media center and cafeteria, other interior renovations and finishes as well as site work. And at school number three, the addition of a cooperative learning classroom and, uh, there's significant drainage issues down at the, uh, school three because of its location, so we'd be looking to get those fixed as well. So on to what, um, I'm able to show you in pictures, because some of that stuff doesn't translate into pretty photographs, it's a, a lot of internal work. Um, but what I want to show you is walk you through the physical additions that we are, we are able to, um, depict tonight. So this is our school number two, this is Long Hill Road and you'll see here, the green and the blue is the proposed, um, addition. What we are looking to add is eight classrooms, blue indicates renovation and green indicates addition. They will mirror each other top and bottom and on the first floor, you would have four classrooms, all equipped with bathrooms and sinks and a cafeteria that would lead out into an outdoor, um, area. That air, outdoor area is here currently, it would be pushed forward and I'll have some photos of that as well and on the second floor, four additional classrooms, again, all with, um, sinks and bathrooms with a media center on top. What I'd like to draw your attention to is, a lot of thought has gone into these, um, plans and keeping the integrity of the buildings and the architect, architecture of the buildings, but also putting a new, uh, spin on them and you'll see a lot of this rounded styled architecture, um, and a lot of glass moving forward in, in these photos. A little closer look, now again, these eight classrooms would be to enhance our preschool program by eight rooms. Now, it doesn't mean that these new classrooms would be specifically be for preschool, that would be up to Mrs. Castaldo and her team that she puts together, um, to see if it would be best to have a preschool wing, um, preschool and kindergarten on the, on the main floor, uh, second grade on the next floor, so on and so forth, that would be internal planning. But it would be the addition of eight full day free preschool to the, uh, members of the Little Falls community. Now, what's important to note about this is that there is a great deal of preschool funding out there that our friends in, in neighboring districts have been able to take advantage of. We are losing out on that state funding because we currently do not have the space to house these preschool classrooms. So this will give us the ability to turn school two into an early childhood, um, center off of an already elementary school building, it makes a, a lot of sense to, to house it there and Mrs. Castaldo's expertise in, uh, primary education makes her the perfect administrator for this piece. Here's a projection of what the, um, semi-completed work would look like, we obviously didn't get to the, um, to the finishes and things of that sort, but you're able to see here, this is our current, um, entry door here and here, so you'll see the, um, four classrooms on this side, there would be four on the other, on the main floor here would be the cafeteria, above it, the media center. And these would be picnic tables for the students to utilize and instead of the individual umbrellas, we would go with a large canopy with multi-colored, um, canvas, um, hanging over, um, we have this currently at school one, um, to give you an idea when you drive by of, of what we'd be looking to put here, we'd like it to be a little bit more colorful, a little bit more primary. Here's some inspirational images for the media center, we're thinking honeycomb style ceiling, uh, very reminiscent of the children's section of Barnes and Noble. The, the type of movable furniture, reading and performance stages, putting books back in the hands of children, um, spaces for them to research, spaces for them to interact with technology and each other. So that is the, um, the school two, uh, addition. I'm gonna pause here for a second, I'm gonna take questions at the end, but if you wanted to, um, put in the chat any questions that you have regarding, uh, specifically the school two addition, this way I could, uh, easily go back to the slides, uh, we'll take a moment. And if someone can monitor that chat to let me know if they see anything, because I'm not able to see it on my end.
Mr. Kucha, could you see that?
Um, I am, uh.
Oh, I got it, I have it now.
You got it, because I could not see.
I have it now.
Are there any questions, Mrs. Marinelli?
Um. I think Ms. Seaver's asking, so, oh, here we go. Yes, okay, so to, I'm, uh, a clarification about preschool, we currently have only full day preschool for our, um, autistic children in town. We have a half-day preschool program, that's an integrated program. So first we take the, um, applications of our special education students, which is a state mandated program and then we make an integrated program of families fill out, um, applications, it's a first come, first served program and you pay for it, so we do not have any free general education or even inclusion style preschool unless you, your family or your child meets the necessary special education requirements. So this would not only be free, it would be full day and it would be, it would not be first come, first served, it would just be like kindergarten is, you would register and your child would have access. And again, you could put, um, questions in the chat, I'll take them throughout, but I just wanted to be mindful, um, that no one forgets what, what's on their mind. So we're going to move over to school three, here's the safe plan for school three, um. Okay, so, uh, this is Main Street here and Garabrant, the current multipurpose room and we're looking, this is a lot of dead space, so in, on this land, you'll notice that there's not much space to build on, uh, but one major piece that the, um, faculty and staff and administration felt that this building was missing was another large area where you could put up to forty, uh, students. Right now they have the multipurpose room and, and a room that's used for art and music, uh, but this room would be more of a, a multi-faceted think tank style classroom, so here you go. Um, some preliminary drawings of what furniture would look like, the walls would be all white walls that the students can plan together, a lot of engineering imagination, collaboration, uh, working together, easy access out that door to an outdoor classroom that would be here, so two teachers could take two classrooms worth of students here where they can really apply, explore, um, those are words we use quite often today instead of take tests, okay? This is how we judge and, and understand if our students can apply the knowledge that they've learned, so a lot of application will be going on in here. Here's a rendering of what we're expecting this addition to look like, again, you'll see the, the rounded architecture, the glass, um, and it's important to say that we are, um, replacing the greenery that we lose, um, even if it's in a different area, we're working with some folks, we already have some donations secured for plants, for the planters, some shrubbery and also some trees. Uh, right before, um, we started school, there was some planting of trees on this other side of the auditorium, so we're always looking to enhance tho, those green areas. Any questions about the school three addition? Um, it's important to say, especially here, this is a great image for you to see, we're having a, all types of audits done, um, because we want to make sure that we do this correctly, so we're having, um, we have a, a green audit, um, our demographic audit and so. And so what has been founded so far is that the um, the give back on the solar is not what it once was. And the amount of work that it would take to get our current roofs up to par with putting solar panels on them, it would be decades before we saw any type of positive return on that. That being said, the board and, and administration is working with the architects to look into placing solar panels on any new additions here and moving forward so that we can make sure that we are as green as possible. And um a lot of that audit um is where the window replacements came in as, as well. Because there's quite a few other things that can be done internally that are, are far more effective and efficient these days. Okay, so school number three. Here's the school number three site plan. You have Stevens Avenue here. Uh right now, this is um Blacktop up until about uh this area here, and then the rest is a um, a play yard area. You'll see here what we're proposing is an auditorium. It's an indoor-outdoor auditorium. Right now, this is currently two basketball courts. What I want you to keep in mind when we talk about this is while the addition is going to be placed on the um, the grass area here, we want to optimize the students' play area. So a lot of this is, is not usable right now because the, it was not excavated properly when this was first made into a play area. And the original asphalt um and blacktop is constantly coming up and we have to um cone it off from the, from the children. That being said, um Google hasn't updated its, its images. But right here in this area, we have the American Gladiator-style equipment for our, our students. So after speaking with them and sending out some surveys, um we came up with this plan. Over here, you'll see two green rectangles. We've heard a lot from our LLD students and our fifth-grade students that they want more, these are my words, not theirs, developmentally appropriate play yard equipment, swings and things where you can more um working groups of two or four and hang out on, swing on um type of, of equipment rather than this um climbing apparatus. Also, instead of two basketball courts, we don't have any type of field that they can uh play on a uh. So we want to turn this into a soccer field. You'll see as I move forward in the plans, this is about a four-foot, ten-inch retaining wall. This would also be a turfed area, and I'll explain its main purpose in a minute. But it could be utilized for those students that during recess do not want to play and also do not want soccer balls, basketballs, or four square balls flying at their heads while they're trying to read a book or have a nice conversation and hang out with their friends. So they have an elevated area here that will have monitored by a recess aid um for those that want to acquire a recess um situation. There'll be a sliding glass wall at the rear of the auditorium that mirrors the size of the stage and will be able to house a hundred people um outdoors that can also view the indoor um performance. Now, we're also looking at this as a, a community uh area. Rec could utilize these soccer fields. Um there can be community involvement at the um, in the auditorium. One thing that came to mind was uh when it rains on Thursdays during the concerts in the park, instead of having to fit in the civic center, we could assist with hosting um those rained-out events in, in this um auditorium. We're also looking for this to, to generate some funds for us and maybe rent it out for um dance recitals and things like that. So I'm going to uh give an overview of the domino effect, the positive domino effect that this auditorium would create. And then I'll show you some additional images. So you could see here, it's easily accessible or not accessible to the existing building. So there'll be an entryway here if it needs to be closed off for a private event or utilized directly from this main hallway. As a result, we would like to make this a fine and performing arts wing. What we've done in our middle school, which I think has really helped to enhance um our academic programs, is make wings much like a high school. So we have a math wing. With the exception of fifth grade, we keep them um isolated except for their electives. But everything else is separated by hallways, and we'd like to make this a fine and performing arts hallway. So right here where I'm circling is currently a band room. We would like to take that band room and make it a child's study team um executive office. So right now, we have child study team members placed throughout all of the buildings. This would bring them to a central location, location with their director and secretary in a conference room. What we love about this space for them is that it's accessible inside and outside. Um sometimes there are situations where we need to call um medical personnel. There are situations where folks are being um tested or exposed to special services for the fir- first time and they don't want everyone to know. So we could let them in through this um, through the back parking lot for confidentiality reasons. Um and so we, we think that that is a, a really great um spot to, to bring them all together. The cafeteria right now, for any of you who have gone to school at school one or have children who are there now, um it is less than comfortable. We are looking to push out the wall to extend, again, um flat wall out to the gym, but add that rounded piece. Um and also you'll see some inspirational images in a, in a few minutes. But we're looking to fill it with tables and chairs instead of the institutional pin-top uh uh tables and cafeteria pins, um certainly not chairs, uh to add some comfort for the middle schoolers. We'd like to take our multipurpose room and repurpose it into a gymnasium. So right now, there's a stage here. So it would have a, a gym floor and the stage would come out and we would put uh one side of bleachers um in here. This is currently the choir room. It would be turned into the band room. And this is currently the director of maintenance and grounds office. We would make that the choir room. Uh one, you know, you may be saying to yourself, well, if they're having this brand-new um auditorium, why do they need these breakout rooms? We have really enhanced our fine and performing arts program. Uh we need um instrument storage, but also we, we have students who are taking music theory and composition classes. So they need a spot where there's computers where they can write their own music and perform their own music, small ensembles, small corrals, and also individual lessons. This is a locker room that's currently not being used, and it will be turned into storage along with the new, the director of maintenance and grounds office would be going, uh relocating here. This would be some physical education storage as well as um revamped occupational and physical therapy rooms. Within the um auditorium space, it's important to note that there are two um separate rooms that inside have changing areas and also um vanities, lit, lit vanities for hair and makeup. There's a, an area here uh to hold props, but also with a lift for deliveries. There are, are private restrooms, two offices and a, a store, school store. We just launched our school store today. It's a virtual school store because we don't have the space for it. But it's, it's amazing nonetheless because it was created um facilitated by our principal, but a hundred percent by the students. We'd like to be relocating the police uh to one of these offices. Uh they've been gracious enough to call their substation a oversized closet with a window. Uh we've, we've given them a little, some upgrades, but this would be um a much nicer area for them when they um come in and out of the, the schools, which they do so frequently. So for those of you who don't know, we wanted to add some spaces so that you could see. This is our current, I'll zoom in a little bit, uh multipurpose room. This is the space that we are referring to in this area. This is the stage that would be removed and replaced with bleachers. And this is our current cafeteria. This here is the wall that we'd be looking to push out. This is the sidewall of the gymnasium that we would mirror that facade of and push out. So here are some inspirational the um images. I want to draw your attention specifically to this one for the gym because I think it best replicates what we would be able to achieve in our area. This is, for those of you who are familiar, this would be the door that leads you out to the cafeteria. The hornet is adorned here. This is where the stage is, so it would be replaced with these um bleachers. And then these two images are used to show you um what we are looking at as far as ceiling height and glass that we would like. But this one here really shows you what we're looking at as far as um some ceiling um art as well as cafe-style chairs and um and tables. The students have um been asking year after year for, for a culinary um elective. So these types of um tables would also lend itself to some culinary art um elective ideas that, that we have. So what's really important to know, as I said, to circle back to what I said in the beginning, is we're really keeping to the integrity of the building and want to be mindful of those um that live around since our buildings are in residential areas. And this is a cross-section to show you to keep the height of the building um the same as the current building. We are building the first half of the auditorium into the ground and the second half above. And so you'll see um here a rendering of what this um auditorium should look like. Um again, it'll be softened by trees and uh shrubbery. There'll be, you'll see the rounded area in the back as well as the front. This is the entryway. Um, this is glass panels. We're very mindful of the folks that live on Ridge, and we want this to be um as decorative as possible. Um but again, showing conjunction between the new and the old. Here are some Ridge Avenue um photos, and you can tell here, this is what I was just speaking about. So this would be the auditorium, and this is the current building. We'd look to be putting a glass-on-glass hornet above this entryway. And you could see it keeps the integrity of the height of the building. To get onto this platform, remember I said before, it's about a four-foot, ten-inch retaining wall. There will be a set of stairs as well as a ramp. We place them on the interior of this addition uh because we, while we want them to be easily accessible, we don't want them to be so inviting um to the, the general public for um off-hours that would um, you know, we thought might cause a disturbance. Here are just some additional 3D views of what we're anticipating this um space to look like. This is the sliding glass doors that I spoke about before. This is the area where folks can bring their chairs for our internal purposes. Um, this is great because it allows us to have two performances at the same time or speakers. For example, um for the first day of school, I always bring in speakers for the staff. And this would allow one to be speaking to up to a hundred teachers out here because there is a, a black curtain that could uh close behind them and another speaker on the stage that could speak to staff that are in, inside the um, the all purpose, uh the um auditorium. Here are some inspirational images. Um so it's really important to note that school number one was an elementary school that we have programmatically turned into a middle school. And it still has a lot of elementary school features. We um are, our administration, Board of Education and uh Maintenance and Grounds have done a phenomenal job of doing some upgrades like changing out the water fountain so the students don't have to sit on their knees anymore to, to drink out of them because they used to be for, you know, first and second graders. Uh but that being said, if you call around to our neighboring towns, um they almost all have a multipurpose room and a gym or a multipurpose room and an auditorium or a gym and an auditorium. So we're missing that space right now. Um so these are some images from middle schools in the area, their auditoriums. If you could please draw your attention to this photo here. Um this is a little bit of an idea we have in our head of finishing the auditorium on both the outside and the inside to give you an idea of what we are looking for the outside of the building to look like as well. This is, would be where you would enter. So it would be a grand type of entryway with a lot of glass, but looks like you are looking at the outside of a building when you're actually inside. Uh so we have a lot of that indoor-outdoor going on. The same thing would occur at the school three um addition. So that concludes my uh presentation. This is where you clap because look how excited the children are. And I will take any um questions that you have. Uh if you want to put them in the chat or raise your hand, I don't want to close my screen in case someone needs me to refer back to a slide.
Alright, individuals that would like to ask any questions, please do so or put it in a chat.
I'd like to start, Council President, if you don't mind.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. So um I, I've seen this presentation before. It, it's so impressive. Um and I notice new things about it that I like every time I see it. Uh I, I really feel like it's not just an enhancement to the district, but also to our community as a whole. So thank you for that. My question is, I don't see any um additional classroom space K through eight. And so what I want to know is, do you anticipate any changes in enrollment in the foreseeable future um based on what's going on around town or trends in the area overall?
So um, as I mentioned before, we're having a full demographic study uh done. Uh we have uh from the um upgrades that have happened across town and the new um, the new building, we have added one student um to our rosters from those um, from those uh new developments. So based on that and our projections, no, we are not. We have um, it's a very interesting fluctuation. You know, we have six sections of one grade level and then four, and then six, and then four. So we have this up and down. We are also uh very fortunate to have a Board of Education that is committed to small class sizes. So you know, right now, we try not to go above sixteen or eighteen in school two. We try not to go above twenty-two um or twenty-three in school three, and we try not to go above twenty-five at school one. It's interesting because I was on the phone with another administrator from a, a surrounding district today who was asking how, you know, how we are able to, to manage with the um making the class size smaller. And I was stunned to find out that they keep their class sizes hovering more around twenty-two to twenty-five. So you know, with new construction, it's not going to give me twenty-five new kindergarteners. Even if it gave twenty kids, they'd be sprinkled about K to twelve. Nine to twelve isn't even in our uh jurisdiction. And then the others would be sprinkled throughout the others uh, uh, you know, throughout multiple class um classes, classrooms and buildings. So um we don't have the final report in our hand, but the initial report doesn't show us any indication of, of needing to build any additional classrooms.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Uh Council President, I see no one with their hands raised on the participant board.
Thank you.
And, and I, there's nothing in the, there's nothing in the chat.
What is your anticipated time? Um I know this would be done in uh sections or, you know, not done all at once. But would, would be your estimated time for when the entire project would be completed?
So we're, we're looking at four to five years. So um we're starting now. Of course, you know, we, we are go before the planning board next month and this administration and Board of Education has prided itself on being very open and honest. And we want to make sure that we're the ones out telling our story. So we really appreciate this time for you to let us do that. And we are going around to uh multiple organizations throughout the town. Um because then the next step is to submit these plans to the um State Department of Ed. And we want to make sure that all of the, the key stakeholders, the PTAs, the LFEF, the mayor and council, the library board, the LFAC, the, the uh fire chief, the police chief, you know, everyone gets to put their eyes on it to see if we missed anything or if we're, we're not seeing something that um, that may be a, a pressing issue or important. Um, you know, after that, they come back to us with um, with a plan and a, and a fiscal response. And then from there, we have to select um if we want all of this, some of it, and would hope to push out for a September vote. Um after it passes, um you know, we put out for the um, we put out for the um, the bids. And then that process starts. There's also a lot that can be done while school's in session. So um even if we made school two's class sizes a tad bit bigger for one year, they could even start on some of that construction. Um it's also important to know this, this addresses both President Scovas and Mr. Kwadi's um questions. If you noticed, as we do some of this renovation, it is a domino effect and opens up some classrooms. So that allows us flexibility in numbers, but also flexibility in moving folks to get work done, accelerated the, the work. And you know, we have a very great group together that's conscious. Uh my, my BA, Christopher Jones, he noticed an opportunity when we decided to go virtual between um the, the December break and, and January to be proactive with COVID to expedite some of the bathroom work. So there's no doubt. So there's no doubt in my mind that he'll work that closely with the project manager to make sure that we're optimizing. Our time to to get the job done.
Thank you. Hopefully in the summer, we can have you come before the seniors and do this presentation at the Civic Center.
Absolutely. I would love to. And again, it's going to.
But that's a very important group in our town. So we want to get you in front of the seniors and to have this great plan explained to them. Can you please, for the record, tell us the board members that are with us this evening at your staff?
Yes, absolutely. And let me just scroll through. So I have, we have Dawn Dora, the Director of Special Services. We have Board Member Mike Murphy. We have Board Member Tom Brightwiser. We have Board President Michael Russo. We have Principal Jill Castaldo. We have Board Member Fred DiMarco. We have Board Member Diana Cribs. We have Principal Nicole Dilks. And there's a couple people with just phones and letters, so I'm not sure if they belong to me. I know Christopher Jones is on as well, the Business Administrator.
And I think you have your Board Member Mike Murphy on.
Yep, I, yep, I guess. I I mentioned him.
So Mrs. Kraus, let the record show that. Does anyone else have any comments or questions before we let Mrs. Marinelli go?
Or anyone on the team want to add anything?
We thank you for your time to present this wonderful plan. We look forward to seeing you again at a later date. So thank you very much and to all your board members for the hard work they put into this referendum.
Thank you so much for the for the support and for allowing us to to share this this evening.
At this time, we're going to continue. We're going to move on to council member reports. Council Member Van Cherry.
Council President, first, obviously, thank you to Superintendent Marinelli for that nice presentation. Alright, so I'm going to jump into some of my items tonight. Just from a Transportation Committee standpoint, we had our annual meeting last week. And we discussed a number of different things, in particular, what I had mentioned at the last meeting about the proposal for 10 new stop signs. Council President and Mayor Damiano, I just want to let you know, I have most of the addresses together. I just need to get a few more, so I'm hoping to finish that up this week and I will share that with you so that we can reach out to the residents. Where the stop signs would eventually be erected just to address any concerns or questions that they have. So I should have everything finalized. This week. Couple other things that I'm working on as we look to see how things change based on the current environment. With Memorial Day weekend, right now, no decision has been made yet in terms of the parade. However, we are still going ahead with the ceremony on Memorial Day to make sure that we honor those. Who gave the ultimate sacrifice. And what we're also going to do is something that we had started two years ago. Where we had the Friday night concert in the park to sort of kickstart the Memorial Day weekend. Myself and Councilwoman Havelitz, we met over the weekend and the two of us have been making some calls. To see if there's interest and I'm pleased to report that, you know, we've already locked in a number of performers. A number of different vendors who want to be a part of this as well as some community groups. So. Over the next few weeks, we're going to be reaching out to a big list that we have to hopefully pull something together. We'll of course involve the Police Department, the Cert team and others. Depending on the guidelines how we are in in May, we'll still of course adhere to that. So it's just something that, you know, as we start to sort of. Do a few things more that we haven't been able to do this past year. We wanted to make sure that, you know, we can bring residents together in a safe environment. And celebrate. And I'll have more updates as it relates to the Memorial Day Parade. Once it connect with the members of the American Legion because we'll see, that one may be a little bit different at this point, knowing that there's a lot of close contact. Couple other things that I do have is just for some residents. I do want to call to attention for the Rec Department. We have been working with them recently. To get some of our boys and girls to sign up for particular sports this spring. I do want to put a message out there to any seventh and eighth grade boy parents that we are looking for about four or five of your boys to play. On the baseball team as the one area unfortunately where we do not have enough players. For those of you not familiar with baseball, you need nine. We have about five, so we could use your help. So any parents out there with a seventh and eighth grade boy. Please reach out to the Rec Center, Mr. Pace or Tyler Passero because we could use you. Lastly, too, I just want to recognize a program that was done recently in town by one of our residents, Anthony Trapanese. Anthony has put together a program working closely with the MSU Ice Hockey Rink. To bring together a program for children with special needs to help them play hockey or just learn how to skate. It's called the Monarchs. So I just wanted to say thank you because that is something that's very close to everyone's heart in town. There's a number of different special needs programs that have been in place, whether it's baseball, basketball, tennis, soccer. And now to see hockey and skating also coming, it's really good to see when a community comes together to create these different programs just to. Offer up sports for everyone. There's no longer, you know, a time where. Kids, for whatever reason, weren't able to play. Now it's welcome to everyone. So I just wanted to recognize Anthony Trapanese for doing that. And wish him and others the best of luck. That is it for me, Council President.
Would you like to talk a little bit about the fees that will be coming before the council at the next meeting?
Sure. Just wanted to let everybody know, thanks to the Rec Department, Mr. Pace and Tyler Passero for finalizing. The updated recreation fee rates that we're hoping to bring on the agenda next month and have that pass sooner rather than later. This includes rentals for the new turf field, inside facilities at the gym. As well as making sure that we have badges in place for pickleball and tennis. So we wanted to make sure that's in a good place so that we can handle all the different applicants that are coming through. And as Councilwoman Seaver talks about all the time, pickleball is very popular and it seems to attract a lot of people from the state of New Jersey. So. It's something that the Rec Department is looking forward to coordinating so that not only Little Falls residents will get to enjoy it, but others will as well.
Thank you, Councilman Venturi for that good report. Councilwoman Seaver, the floor is yours, but before you begin, I have to say. The councilman mentioned the pickleball court. There were some people that wouldn't shovel out their driveways, but. Seemed to be like four pickleball players, if that's what they called, decided to shovel out the pickleball court. I mean, I was pretty, I was pretty impressed by that. So the floor is yours.
I think it's, you know, whatever you find most important in your life. So. Hopefully they were, maybe we should get them onto a snow angels project here in town. So. So thank you very much. So right now I just wanted to talk about Municipal Alliance and something that we have going on with them. We are celebrating the Random Acts of Kindness Day. And where we have children or residents around town submitting things that they did in terms of random acts of kindness. It actually was so popular that we've extended it through February 28th. So just to make sure everybody understands and there was an email blast about it also. So the Municipal Alliance, we are upholding the tradition of celebrating kindness. Because we definitely all know that we need a little kindness now. Things are a bit crazy. So really, even the smallest act of kindness can change anybody. So in 2021, we want to encourage that everybody is exploring the good and making kindness the norm. That this isn't something that you have to try to do. This is something you're already doing. So in honor of that and in honor of Random Acts of Kindness Day, we're encouraging everybody to participate. And if your child has done a random act of kindness. And you submit it to the Municipal Alliance here in Little Falls, they can actually win, win a free pair of earbuds. So all you have to do is email the littlefallsma@gmail.com. By the end of the day on February 28th to share the kindness and it helps us kind of share the love, share the kindness. And see all the good acts that are are being done around town and even in surrounding towns. So some things that I just want to read some of the submissions that we've had because they are really heartwarming. We have Luca and also some with a little bit of his help from help from his little brother Vincenzo. Participated in making 150 bag lunches for homeless shelter in Newark. And also. He made Valentine's Day cards for a nursing home in Cedar Grove. And then gathered clothes and donated them to the PV High School Ops Grad Clothing Drive. Luca also gathered old books and donated them to the PV High School Interact Club and helped drop them off at the high school. And then also donated animal supplies to the local animal shelter. And once they are, once people are allowed back inside after COVID, he's hoping to go and volunteer at those animal shelters. And then he's also helped shovel the snow with around his neighborhood. With any of his neighbors that are elderly. And then also we had a resident write in that her son. And his neighborhood friends made Valentine's Day for Valentine's for nursing homes and collected unopened cereals and snacks. And delivered them to the food pantry. And again, 150 sandwiches for the homeless in Newark. So some really great work that's getting done out there in our community. And then we have a young boy Severio and he's been taking the garbage out for his dad. So all acts of kindness can be in the home or outside the home, you know, it affects everybody. He also painted rocks and put them around town so people can find them and smile. He collected food to donate to a local food bank. And his, his quote is, it's hard when people ask what you have done that is kind because you're supposed to be kind every day. So I think that's a really wonderful quote and something that we can all live by. And then also we had another resident write in. That her six-year-old daughter made blueberry cupcakes and delivered them to her elderly neighbors on a snowy day. And then lastly, just the last one that I'm going to share right now is a neighbor. Mentioned, wrote in that there is a family that has five children. Abby, Bailey, Tyler, Sam and George. And those children hand painted a card and baked cookies for them. They also pitched in and shoveled the driveway when they were plowed in. So some really great community work and outreach going on. Very inspirational. So I really hope that people take this report, write in, share their acts of kindness again. You can email if you have anything to share to littlefallsma@gmail.com. If you have any difficulty, you can always email me too.
Thank you, Councilmember Seaver for that wonderful report. I gather a lot of those individuals are a product of our grammar schools as well. That's very enlightening to hear. Thank you very much. Councilman Quadi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Wow, Councilwoman Seaver, that is quite a list. I wasn't expecting to be so inspired by this meeting and I, I know some of the kids that you mentioned and they're great kids, but. But it was so impressive to hear what you just shared. So thanks, thanks for sharing that. You know, as far as what's going on in the schools right now, obviously, we, we saw the presentation. What Superintendent Marinelli did not mention, but I will, is that their website, their new website was recent, recently launched. And it's really terrific. So if you've been to the old, the old school website. I think if you visit the new one, you'll be pleasantly surprised at how well it's been up updated. So take an opportunity to do that. They really, really did a great job. On a, on a different note, I was in a local business today that has a bulletin board up. And, and on that bulletin board was a flyer about domestic violence awareness. And I was really struck because they had phone numbers at the bottom for the low, for the domestic violence hotline. And four of those numbers were taken off of that flyer. And so it was just a reminder to me. It just sort of really struck me about the work and the awareness that the Domestic Violence Prevention Committee does. And, and this fire probably was not posted by us, but it, but it underlined for me. How important domestic violence awareness is particularly right now during COVID. On top of that, we're having a very snowy winter as everyone knows. So. Please check in on anyone you know who you feel may be subject to violence, maybe in a bad situation. I will share the phone number now. It's 1-800-799-SAFE. That's the National Domestic Violence Hotline number. Please don't try to get involved in a situation yourself. Call the professionals, ask for guidance. They can, they can direct you on how to help someone in need. But just want to remind everybody to, to, if you need help, get help. There are people out there for you. And, and if you know someone that you think may need help, you may want to call that hotline number yourself to try and learn the best way to help those people. Other than that, that's it for me. Thank you, Council President.
Very good report, Councilman Quadi. Thank you very much. Councilmember Havelitz, I'm getting kind of hungry. When are we going to open up this food market?
Soon, soon. So speaking about the market, the market prep is definitely underway. With the help of Councilwoman Seaver and Tyler Passaro, we are well underway of having. Great vendors again at the market, some new, some returning. The market's going to begin May 30th and will extend until November the 7th. We're still looking for some artists and vendors though. So if you know anyone, they can reach out and email. Lffarmersmarket.com for more information. Also this year, we're going to bring sponsorship to the market. We're looking at lots of local businesses have reached out to us saying, hey, want to be involved, but we don't really have the type of products that you sell at the market. But we want to get our names out there, to promote our business, to be involved with the market. So we're going to start a sponsorship program this year. Also, if you'd like to get more information about sponsorship. You can reach Tyler at Lffarmersmarket.com. So that's something that's new and great. Hopefully we're going to do sponsorships with a reusable bag that you'll get at the market to promote the businesses. So it's something good. Also, great news, library has reopened. Not the, you know, capacity, maximum capacity, but there are 35 people maximum. You can also go in, use the computer. Just to clarify what I said on the last meeting, we talked about the curbside pickup. And I was a little unsure of how, you know, residents can establish that. You can email or phone the library. Email would be at LFP L, the number two at littlefallslibrary.org. And they will be happy to get some books out to you. They still have all of their virtual things going on, which is great. And they have a winter bingo starting tomorrow at 3:30. So if you're not doing anything, definitely log on. That's it.
Right. I know there, you're kicking up the Friends of the Library program. Is that correct?
That is correct. They are looking for at least one new board member, actually three new board members. Possibly a president, a vice president and a secretary. So they're definitely looking for board members. Also, they're looking just for people to join the Friends of the Library. A lot of people don't know about them, but that is the way to fundraise for the library and bring some extra added amenities to the, to the library.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on senior advisory, as I mentioned before, it's not a group that likes to or wants to do Zoom or WebEx. So we, we went to the old fashioned phone, making some phone calls to the members. And the council mayor, they're, they're really just, they just really want to get out and, and do something and. They really just can't wait to go dancing or to just have, hear music or to have, to have some gatherings. We're hopeful that in the spring, if it's permissible, to have maybe a concert at the Civic Center in the parking lot. To bring in some entertainment, to do something of that nature and also possibly a barbecue at one of the Legion halls in town. As long as it's permissible. So and also they did ask. About last year, we didn't spend so much monies in that particular group, but I ensured them that we will definitely spend all the allocated monies that the mayor gave us. This coming year, I think it's well deserved. It's not a big budget, but we'll definitely use those funds. I also want to give a shout out as far as the seniors, a program called the Senior Freeze, which you have to be 65 and older. And actively receiving social security, honored before December 31st, 2019. You have to have your 2019 property taxes paid and as well as your 2020 taxes paid by June 1st, 2021. Your income has to be under 92,969 and the deadline for this program is November 1st. This is a state program and sometimes this information just doesn't get out to everyone or no one, seniors don't know where to find it. And we're hoping to grow our database so that we could notify all our seniors of this program and other programs going forward. Before I hand it over to the mayor and he will comment on this individual, I do want to say. My deepest sympathies to our planner, Jeff DeNoda, who passed. He was a really wonderful individual, the one that the council, myself, the mayor will sadly, sadly miss. He was bringing this town in a great, wonderful direction. At this time, Mayor, I know you have your budget tonight. If you would do your proclamation and your comments and rate it, rate on and then do your budget, the floor is yours, sir.
Absolutely, Council President. Before I begin on all of those items, the first thing, as you indicated, is our sympathies. Absolutely, Council President. Before I begin on all of those items, uh, the first thing, as you indicated, is our sympathies are with the family of Jeff Genoda, who was our township planner for a number of years now. Uh, Jeff was here and involved with the township even prior to me becoming mayor. Uh, and, and working with him was a real pleasure. Jeff really shared in the vision that I think we all have for Little Falls and the direction that we were heading. Uh, and he will certainly, uh, be missed. So our sympathies are with Jeff Genoda's family uh, during these difficult times who passed away at only the very young age of fifty years old. So our sympathies are with that. Uh, next, I'm just a couple of, uh, little issues. Uh, of, with all the snow that we've had, of course, this is, uh, where I think we're probably starting to approach it. Although maybe not in feet, an unprecedented number, the number of little storms that we have had back to back to back to back uh, is causing our salt supply to begin running low. So uh, we are in the process of attempting to order more, but as is every town in the uh, surrounding area and the, the state and surrounding states. Um, everybody is in the fight to get more salt. So we are working to diligently get more salt to ensure that our roadways remain black after every storm as, uh, our DPW is possibly world renowned for. Uh, next is we're going to be addressing some of the recreation fees, as you've heard, uh, Councilmember, uh, Van Cherry indicate. Uh, and we are going to be including that so that we can get all of our sports off the ground and all of our field rentals for our non-Little Falls sports off the ground and get ourselves in line with the surrounding communities. Especially now with our new and improved, the sports and recreation complex. Uh, on another positive note that we do have, we are in the final stages of closing with PNC Bank. Uh, this has been something that has been in the pipeline for some time. As many know, we purchased the first three homes on Stanley Street, uh, and now we are in the, again, the final, final stage of closing with PNC. And, uh, these things, uh, ended up working together, although they were not intentionally or originally planned together. But the part of Ms. Marinelli's presentation where she talks about the uh, addition to school one, primarily the new auditorium there. Uh, it will be almost connected to the parking lot that will be improved at PNC and the first three homes there. So it will address that potential parking. Uh, it will, it'll, it provides a solution to what may have become a parking issue, uh, already. So i- it is just one more thing confirming that uh, the purchase of those homes and this lot is the right thing for this township to provide downtown parking for all of our residents. Um, and finally, before I get to our proclamations and the budget presentation, uh, I will say I've been in touch with a lot of our, our, our businesses, whether it be in downtown Little Falls, up Route twenty-three, uh, Stevens Ave, uh, all, all down, down Main Street in the other direction. Our local businesses, after now eleven and a half months of this pandemic, are, are really beginning to feel, the ones that have continued to make it this far uh, and who may have originally been doing okay, are, are really feeling the impacts of this pandemic. And I encourage everyone to eat local, shop local, buy local, uh, to the extent that you can, the extent that the township or a vendor here or a business in town has that to offer. Uh, please be conscientious of that. Please help our local individuals. Uh, a- and if it's something that you see on Amazon and for the same price you can get here in town, I would encourage you to make your way to the middle of town or, uh, one of the other streets in town and buy it here in Little Falls. Rather than relying on Amazon to deliver it, especially in our food industry as well. Please be conscientious. Please eat local. Our, our, our restaurants are hurting. And I would encourage everyone to make their way. We have some of the best restaurants. We have some of the best little, uh, places here in town. So please be conscientious of that as we hopefully wind up, uh, towards the end of this pandemic. So please just be conscientious. That said, we now have two proclamations to read. And this first proclamation needs almost no background other than we have a resident who will be turning one hundred years old on February twenty-fifth. And that is, uh, some accomplishment uh, that, that, that very few achieve. And I, I, I'm here today to say happy birthday to this individual and read them a proclamation that I have prepared, uh, because Helen has also been involved uh, in our senior clubs here in town for a number of years. Uh, a- and I want to thank her for her being here and a contributing member to Little Falls for now forty-nine years. And it reads, whereas Helen Mortis was born on February twenty-fifth, nineteen twenty-one and has been a resident of Little Falls for forty-nine years. And whereas Helen has been active in the Little Falls Jolly Seniors, the Golden Ager's Club and the Amateur Organ Association. And whereas Helen has always had a passion for playing the organ, reading and playing cards. And whereas Helen will be celebrating her one-hundredth birthday on February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Now therefore, I, James Belford Damianno, Mayor of the Township of Little Falls, do hereby recognize and celebrate Helen Mortis on her one-hundredth birthday and declare February twenty-fifth, two thousand one, as Helen Mortis Day in the Township of Little Falls. I want to be the first to say happy birthday. Congratulations on achieving this incredible milestone in your life and we wish you nothing but health, happiness and continued, uh, well-being over the next years that you have ahead. I have one other proclamation to read this evening. This one is not nearly as exciting as a one-hundredth birthday. Uh, but nonetheless, it is something that will help us achieve one hundred years of life for many of us in the future, and it has to do with radon. And many residents, especially and particularly in the great notch section of town, uh, have radon issues in their homes. And radon is a radioactive gas that can cause lung cancer and has proven to do so with prolonged exposure. Uh, a- and it is a concern, uh, for, for many who don't even know that it exists because it is completely odorless, but it can cause major lifelong issues. Uh, we were as a township, uh, through our building department, James D. Maria, able to secure two thousand dollars with, and we got them at a reduced rate of ten dollars apiece. We were able to secure two hundred radon test kits free of charge to residents who may want to perform a test. And all you need to simply do is reach out to our building department. Uh, and you can either schedule to have one picked up or you can schedule to have one delivered to your house, which may take a few extra days if you're, uh, unwilling or uncertain about leaving your home to do so at Town Hall. Uh, but these tests are simple. You can place them in your basement or the lowest floor of your home. So if you're in a ranch or that doesn't have a basement, uh, you can put it on your first floor. Uh, and it's essentially, it looks like a little tuna can that you can open. You let it sit for the recommended number of days. You'll seal it, put it back in an envelope with postage prepaid, send it off. They will test the house for radon. Uh, hopefully all of our levels are plenty low that you will not need to, uh, remediate that, but it is something that you should be conscientious of. Uh, and it's a free test that is offered to the township through a grant. So I would encourage residents to, uh, reach out to our building department. Uh, some information will be sent out in an email blast about this. Uh, but you can get one of these radon kit, uh, test kits for free and do the test yourself. Send it in, like I said, and get your results. So in order to, uh, get these test kits, part of what we need to do is read a proclamation. And it reads, whereas radon is a naturally occurring radioactive gas, that is the second leading cause of lung cancer. And whereas prolonged exposure to radon can kill as many as five hundred people in New Jersey each year. And whereas families who reside in homes with elevated radon levels are at risk of developing serious health problems. And whereas any home could have high levels even when neighboring homes do not. And whereas radon testing can be done with great ease at a relatively low expense to the homeowner with the cost of reducing radon concentrations being comparable to a home repair. And whereas the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and the United States Environmental Protection Agency are collaborating during the month of January to promote the need for radon testing in an effort to protect the lives of our state's residents. And now therefore, I, James Belford Damianno, Mayor of the Township of Little Falls, on behalf of the Little Falls Township Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February twenty-twenty-one as Radon Action Month and the Township of Little Falls and call upon all residents who have not yet tested to test their homes for radon and to reduce radon levels if elevated levels are found to protect their families from the serious risk of radon. Uh, so that concludes the proclamations this evening before I get into, uh, this year's annual twenty-twenty-one budget presentation. Uh, it is a brief presentation, uh, that is prepared and provided to, uh, the council for their review as well as the residents before the a real budget introduction, review and second reading of the budget in the upcoming months. So if you bear with me for just a second here, I'm going to start a screen share to ensure that everybody can see uh, the same presentation as I, uh, prepare to go through it here. And I hope that oh, bear with me here. I am going to. All right. Can I just get a thumbs up from the council members if they see the full screen of the presentation? Great. All right. So this is the two thousand and twenty-one mayor's budget presentation to the Little Falls Township Council. Today's February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. And this year, the summary of the twenty-twenty-one current fund budget, and you know, I'm, before I really get too far into the budget this year, I want to preface this year's budget with, uh, some of the serious concerns that we are getting into and need to address this year as well as over the next couple of years based upon, uh, twenty twenty and the COVID pandemic. Uh, this year, we have seen for the first time i- in, in, in many, many, many decades, if not ever, uh, a shortfall in revenues that was absolutely unprecedented. Uh, the pandemic caused shutdowns and a, uh, lack of revenues to be generated uh, that have never been seen before. Originally, we were anticipating a number being around two million dollars. Uh, it thankfully it ended a little bit less than that and we are on the, the million and change mark. Uh, but it is something that needs to be considered and something that needs to be addressed with our future debt service and a number of other items. And it's something that we, and I tried to remain, and I have, uh, advised the council that we've all tried to remain very conscientious of because we understand that an impact as a result of a pandemic, uh, is really adding insult to injury to residents. And what we have done is we are trying our absolute best and I'm trying my absolute best to uh, keep that in mind that after so many people have been knocked down this year as a result of the pandemic, that a, a massive tax hike is something that I just could not stomach. And of course, this is all coming off of a zero tax increase last year, which makes this all that, uh, you know, more difficult in trying to balance this year's budget. Uh, that said, this year's summary of the twenty-twenty-one current fund budget, current municipal appropriations of, uh, nine million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. Our reserve for uncollected taxes are nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our debt service is one million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Salaries this year total seven million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. With budget revenues expected at five million, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, leaving the amount to be raised by taxes of thirteen million, seven twenty-eight, three oh nine. So there is a substantial amount to be raised by taxes, not too far off from prior years. Uh, but something that again, we need to do in order to meet all of the expenses that the township has in its budget. Now, the local municipal tax rate, a- and this is some dryer information for, for people, uh, because it is very number driven. Uh, I am very number driven. However, I understand that there might be questions at the end that I'm happy to field. Uh, the local municipal tax rate in the twenty-twenty-one budget is six hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars under the tax levy cap and under the appropriations cap by a hundred and ninety-two thousand, thirty-one dollars. So it remained under both the tax levy cap as well as the appro- appropriations cap this year. The twenty-twenty-one assessed value of the township is one billion, five hundred and thirty-five million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars. Or up from the twenty-twenty assessed value of one billion, five hundred and eight million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. A twenty-seven million or so, uh, dollar value change to the township. Thanks to a lot of the, uh, development or redevelopment that the township has seen, which frankly is one of the reasons that we are able, and I, I believe that this budget will be able uh, to keep some stability in the taxes for our residents here in town. Uh, the municipal taxes are projected for twenty-twenty-one at point eight nine four. That is the local municipal portion of the taxes. And the twenty-twenty municipal actual taxes are point eight six eight. Again, something else that, uh, I, I, I think needs to go, uh, said is that there are so many other aspects of government who are not affected by uh, the, the, the lack of revenues that we have seen this year here in Little Falls. And what I mean by that is, is the counties, the schools, you know, and thankfully for them, uh, continue to collect or have collected and received a hundred percent of what they uh, were looking to, at least by way of taxes to the, uh, from, from various municipalities. Because the municipalities have to write that check to the county as well as the schools, even though there was a substantial shortfall in what we saw. And what I, what I mean by that is, is that the township is now stuck holding the bag for the shortfall in revenues ourselves. Because we are required to make those payments to the county as well as the schools. Uh, so the, the, the township is in a position where those funds need to be made up, uh, in the following budget years. Uh, next, what is of note is the local municipal tax rate where we have a change of two point six increase in tax points per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation over the twenty-twenty tax rate. What does that mean? That means we're going to get down to the real numbers here and I will at the very end of this slide. That means that the, the average home in the Township of Little Falls in two thousand and twenty-one is valued at three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. That's up from a couple of years ago. Municipal taxes in two thousand and twenty would have been two thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. They will now be up to two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars on the average home in Little Falls, which is an eighty-one dollar increase in municipal taxes for the year. And what makes this two point six point increase, uh, so important and, 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 and incredibly, incredibly reasonable this year, especially after the, uh, the effects of, of, of COVID and the pandemic will be explained on the, the prior slide as, as we get af- after, uh, this budget highlight slide here. And the twenty-twenty fund balance, uh, is two point seven million dollars. The twenty-twenty-one fund balance anticipated is, uh, one million, four hundred and five thousand, four hundred dollars. The twenty-twenty-one remaining is one million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred dollars. The twenty-nineteen fund balance was two million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, nine fifty-nine. The twenty-twenty fund balance anticipated is one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The twenty-twenty remaining was eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine. Uh, so again, the, we, 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 we're doing everything that we can here to ensure that our, our budget remains stabilized to the extent that we can. Now on some budget highlights here, we have assessed values increased, as I indicated before, by twenty-seven million, thirty thousand, three hundred dollars. This is largely due to a lot of the new development that we have here in town. And thankfully for all of us who were already here, uh, these new homeowners in town are sharing in what would have been the tax increase in burden and amount to be raised by taxes that the township is experiencing this year. So really, I, I need to say that this, this development has really sort of helped save all of us in the tax increase that we will be seeing in the twenty-twenty-one budget. Uh, library taxes are five hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars for twenty-twenty, but that's twenty-twenty-one. And appropriations have been set to reflect the salary increase of two point seven five percent in the Teamsters Bargaining Union, Union contract. Administrative salary increases are set to reflect a two point five percent base increase. And the public employee retirement system costs, uh, reflect the cost per employee of seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. There are no changes in administrative positions in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, this is certainly not a year where there is a real possibility to add additional, uh, help in Town Hall or in any of our departments, uh, especially coming off of again, what was a difficult revenue year for the township. Salaries for police have been incorporated to the twenty-twenty-one budget, uh, in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement at two point seven five percent. And police and fire pension costs reflect cost per officer of thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. And we are going to continue with our vehicle acquisition program for police with the purchase of two new vehicles in twenty-twenty-one. This has been something that we've been doing uh, since I've been mayor. A- and, and it is something that again, as I really impressed upon everyone each year, it avoids that real surge in a budget where this purchase of two vehicles per year, every year, really helps maintain sort of a flat line without seeing any spike on any particular year. Again, I've used the example, if we bought zero in year one, zero in year two and six in year three, uh, it would certainly have more of an impact on that budget each time that we did that. Uh, a- and I'm not about playing games in our budget and, you know, adding, uh, you know, fluff on, on non-election years and trying to cut funds out on election years. It's, it's not about that. It's about doing what's right for the residents of this township. Uh, again, this year, unfortunately, we are dealing with an unprecedented event. Uh, the shared service arrangement with the Borough of Elmwood Park to provide EMS services continues to that community. The expense is about three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And that's offset by revenues from Elmwood Park of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Those are the figures being included for the budget because again, there's nothing worse than having or receiving less revenue than you anticipate, uh, which was again, an issue that we faced in twenty-twenty as a result of the pandemic, not so much with EMS, but as a general rule. Again, the two point six percent, uh, the two point six point tax, sorry, two point six point increase this year. Uh, a lot of those points, over two points, actually two point one and change points are right here on this very slide. What I mean by that is insurance costs are up this year. What I mean by that is, insurance costs are up this year of a hundred, of, of, I'm sorry, of seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars over last year. Little Falls EMS program costs are budgeted at three hundred and ninety-three thousand, four oh one, with offsetting revenues in excess of that at four oh nine, five thirty-two. But as far as other costs, PFRS pension costs increased by forty-three thousand, six twenty-nine. And PERS pension costs increased a hundred and ninety-three, four forty-seven. And for those that aren't aware of the acronyms, PFRS is the Police and Fireman's Retirement System, and PERS is the Public Employee Retirement System. So if we look at just PERS, PFRS, and the insurance costs alone. Though, those three things right there total about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. A tax point in Little Falls is roughly one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I say that, and that's important, because two-point-one or an, and change tax points are a result of insurance increases. Pension contribution increase and pension contribution increases. What does that mean? That means that there is really a half of point increase in this budget. Coming off of, again, a horrendous revenue generation year for the township in twenty-twenty. And the real impact to the township in the items in which the township has any control whatsoever. Is point five points of taxes. And again, I want to just highlight the fact that this budget has no fat. This budget, we, 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 we're unable to have any fat before COVID. We are certainly unable to have any fat in the budget post-COVID, especially this year coming off of, again, a horrible revenue year. Uh, so I, I say that just so that I can impress upon, again, all the residents here, the council, that there is no excess in this budget. It is a tight budget, and we're doing everything we can and to remain conscientious of the taxpayers here in Little Falls. Uh, in twenty-twenty-one, debt service costs are down from last year by uh, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. In anticipation of a bond sale in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, there's uh, you know, a saying, and although it's somewhat laughable, that the. Cost to borrow funds uh, in twenty-twenty-one is as close to free money as you can actually get. Uh, so we are going to be looking to go out to a bond sale in twenty-twenty-one to do what we can. To save as much for the taxpayers of Little Falls as we can over the future. Uh, as we get towards the conclusion here, some of the highlights, again, capital budget addresses the needs of the township's infrastructure. And equipment requirements, and if authorized by the council, it'll affect an increase in current debt of about two-point-two-four-seven. Uh, and cost of interest at market rate is approximately nine thousand dollars, so interest rate uh, is absolutely tremendous right now. It will have a very minimal impact to the residents here in Little Falls. Uh, that said, the budget introduction will be a month from today, March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. And I will be asking that the public hearing and adoption by the council occur on April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, I want to thank everyone for their uh, humoring me in this year's budget presentation. Uh, a- and again, I, I really ask for uh, this councils, as well as the residents of this township support, especially. In such a difficult, difficult year, where I truly, 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 as although I do every year, this year in particular remained. Uh, extremely hyper-conscious of everyone's household incomes and issues that they may be facing at home. Uh, so that concludes the budget presentation, and I'm going to return us now to our uh, regular order of business here uh, with, oh, excuse me. Did I screw this up? Let me see. All right, did we return now to the regular presentation? Okay, so we're back here with the council. Thank you, council president. That uh, concludes my budget presentation this evening.
At this time, I'll open up the floor to the council members for questions or comments regarding that budget presentation.
I, I just want to say, I think mayor, you know, you've done a, a great job in, in keeping the increase to a minimum. But while still maintaining a level of service to our residents that they deserve, you know. It, it, this is, this is a town that, you know, it prides itself on, on how. You know, so many of the services that we have, so many that we provide, and that the fact that we're able to do it. With what is a minimal increase that is based on retirement funds and insurance costs and not. You know, spending that's out of control or anything, I, I think it's a real credit to you, so congratulations and thank you for that.
Thank you, councilor, and yet to, to that point, there, there are no services, and this was not included in the presentation, but there are no services. That are being terminated, that are being cut, that are being, uh, you know, removed in order to, uh, to save this year. We. I think the residents of Little Falls deserve the same services that they've always gotten. Uh, you know, in, in remaining conscientious of that as well, there, there's, I, I would hate to see. Uh, you know, us not plow the roads or cut, you know, in, in those types of areas. You know, i- it's the, it's the services that our residents deserve, and I'm not willing to cut on those.
Are there any comments or freshen up behalf of the council at this time? We're going to move forward. Thank you, mayor. Councilor Wenzel, do you have anything for this governing body this evening?
Uh, no, I, no, I don't, uh, council president. However, I also wish to extend my condolences to the Ginota family. I've known Jeff uh, for uh, for quite some time. And um, it's very sad, but I hope he and his family find some peace and uh. He will always remain in my heart as a fantastic planner for us in Little Falls and for the state of New Jersey.
Thank you, counselor. At this time, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? By Councilman Kwadi, second by Councilmember Hablitz. All those in favor of opening to the public signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Are you uh, standing there, Councilman Kwadi?
I said aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement.
Members of the public who desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the council president will recognize them in order. Please give your name and address for the record. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you, Mrs. Kraus.
Now, let's see. Council president, there is no one that has their hand raised in the uh, participants box at this time.
Ca- council president?
Yes.
There was a question in the chat. Obviously, we had to wait till the public comment. Can we address that one, if you don't mind, from Mr. Britwiser?
Sure, absolutely. Councilman Vancher, would you like to say that question, or Mr. Britwiser?
So, hey Chris, has there been any progress with the speed hump project? Uh, so the update that we have at this point is, last year, we met with the residents over at Van Pelt in Jacobus to discuss speed humps. Unfortunately, um, due to COVID at the time, the mayor had asked that we table it to twenty-twenty-one. Now, as part of finalizing the twenty-one budget, there are funds allocated in the road resurfacing project. Where we're looking to revisit with both residents on Jacobus and Van Pelt to finalize um, the additions of speed humps. Because our last conversations with the residents on Jacobus, we were looking at potentially three speed humps further up the street versus at the bottom of the hill. And then for Van Pelt, we're looking at two. Now, this is the first stage that we're looking at. There are other streets that are up for consideration. But any of those streets would not be a part of twenty-one. The focus right now would be for Jacobus and Van Pelt, since we were unable. To do those in twenty-twenty due to COVID. Mayor, if you want to add anything else?
Sure, and, and councilman, just to be clear, the Van Pelt residents agreed that the first step or the first plan of attack would be adding some stop signs along the roadway. Before jumping right into speed humps, uh, so we're going to attempt that first as part of the uh, stop sign ordinance that is uh. Being revised and revisited frequently lately, uh, and tha- and then from there, if need be to reconsider. Uh, speed humps, but Jacobus certainly something that can still be considered.
Yeah, and we agreed with both um, streets that we would come back again for another group gathering to discuss it further. Since that was the intro last year, we would follow up it again at some point, probably in the spring, if not the summer.
So, Mr. Britwiser, hopefully that answers your question. If you have a follow-up question, you're, you know, could, could ask it at this time. Uh, Mr. Kucha, are there any, uh, anything else?
There are no hands raised, sir.
Thank you. Have a motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vancher, the second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kwadi. Uh, Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hablitz? Yes. Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancherri?
Yes.
For President Scobba.
Yes, uh, have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Kwadi, second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hablitz. Before we ta- take a vote on it, uh, I, I see it, uh, we did add the uh. Resolution authorizing extension to the township's solid waste contracting with uh, F Bezo, Bazo Junior Rubbish Removal. Um, I, I know that's a, a good company. They've been doing an excellent job, so I'm happy we're extending that contract. Does any council members have any questions or comments regarding uh, the consent agenda?
I would just extend the same comment, council president, about the um, Basso Furbish removal. I mean, their staff is very courteous to the residents. We always hear a lot of great things. Uh, there are some residents who don't have the ability to push the garbage can to the curb, and they are will. Willing to run up to the door to make sure that happens, so again, to your point, it's good to see them back on for another couple of years.
Yes, you know, a big part of what we do here with the mayor is sewers and garbage, you know, very important, two, two highly important items besides security. And safety of the community. Without those two entities happening, uh, we do live in a society that has a lot of uh, rubbish, I guess, or, or garbage. You could say that. Um, so we'll move along. We'll ask for the uh, roll call now. Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Hablitz? Yes. Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seber?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancherri?
Yes.
Council President Scobba.
Yes. Well, at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Vancherri, second by Councilmember Seber. Thank you. All those in favor of concluding this meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those opposed emotions signify by saying nay. This meeting is now closed. Thank you.